Good evening, everyone. Today is Wednesday, March 2, 2022, and this is a meeting of the Gloucester School Committee. We are meeting under the consistent with Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021. This meeting will be conducted by remote participation. The public may not physically attend this meeting, but every effort will be made to allow the public to view and listen to the meeting in real time and participate when necessary. If you are calling in on a phone, you can press *9 to request to speak. If you are watching on a computer or device, there is a raise hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications to be recognized to speak. And I'll state the mission of Gloucester Public Schools is for all students to be successful and engaged, laid up long learners. And I ask that you join me for the statement. First order of business are oral communications. If there is anybody that would like to speak, I will read the guidelines for oral communications. Public shall have the opportunity at every regular school committee meeting to be heard under oral communications. Oral communication shall allow any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to the school committee business to appear before the school committee, state their problem without debate, and the matter will be referred to the proper subcommittee. For items that are on the agenda, members of the public may address the committee with permission of the chair. Person speaking under oral communication shall be limited to three minutes each and shall submit a copy of their prepared communication to the recording secretary. The school committee chair shall not allow complaints as to individual performance or character. I think I probably should state who's present at the meeting first, right? So we have Sam Watson, who is joining us online. Assistant Superintendent Greg Bach, Superintendent Lummis, Chief Minio member, Melissa Texara Prince, myself, Kathy Clancy, Bill Melvin, Mayor Greg Bergen. We have Melissa Francis here, joining us for the presentation on K-5 benchmarks. And our recording secretary, Maria Puglisi. And I think everybody can see who else is joining us online and they'll be part of the presentation on the K-5 benchmarks. Does anybody, yes, somebody wants to speak? Eileen Murphy? You may speak.
Hi, everyone. My name is Eileen Murphy, and I am a resident of Gloucester. I'm here today to voice my serious concern and opposition to allowing the agreement of the Freedom Church to rent the Beeman School cafeteria, athletic fields, and classrooms for worship and religious education. Allowing this church or any other organization who preaches beliefs that discriminate against any group and particularly, in this case, against the LGBTQ community simply should not be allowed. While this church portrays itself as welcoming, they are far from inclusive in their rhetoric. The leader of the Freedom Church has a Masters of Divinity from an extreme fundamental evangelical Southern Baptist seminary that, among other questionable beliefs, does not support anti-discrimination protections for LGBTQ people and opposes LGBTQ equality. In 1996, the denomination declared that even a desire to engage in homosexual relationship is always sinful, impure, degrading, shameful, unnatural, indecent, and perverted. Facing that language on a passage from the first chapter of the New Testament Book of Romans. In 2000, they defined homosexuality as sin and marriage as the uniting of one man and one woman in a covenant commitment for a lifetime. They go on to say that legalizing same-sex marriage would convey a societal approval of a homosexual lifestyle, which the Bible calls sinful and dangerous both to individuals involved in society at large. I ask you tonight, is this the kind of message that we want to provide a pulpit for? By renting space to groups that hold these discriminatory beliefs, I believe that we are part of that problem. Or is it easier to turn a blind eye? Do we want to share our classroom space with groups that hold these extreme beliefs? An elementary school classroom is a safe and personal space where our children reside for most of their day. It's like their second home. Having this space occupied by strangers on the weekend would cause a breach in that assurance of security. Even though our students are not physically there, there are real safety concerns by giving access to strangers, where they could be identifying photos, names, personal information. This would need to be addressed for any organization that would rent classrooms in our schools. The Gloucester Human Rights Commission has already established a subcommittee to speak directly to this matter. The matter has also been brought to the city council. I'm asking the school committee the following three things. First, I ask that you reconsider this agreement given these grave concerns and rescind the contract. Second, amend the district's school policy to require that renters sign an anti-discrimination agreement. Lastly, I also would ask that you amend the district's policy to bar the use of classrooms by any organizations during the school year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, my lady. Is there anybody else who would like to speak tonight? Okay, I see no more hands raised. Okay, so next we will have recognitions. There must be some good things going on to recognize. Anybody, Ben Tenny? There we go.
I would like to recognize the cast and crew of Shrek over at West Parish at the pleasure of attending. And they just did a phenomenal job. The crew, the kids, and it was just very well done. So I had a wonderful week.
Very cool. And I know we have a lot of upcoming performances that are on our radar, so looking forward to those as well. Okay, next we have Jenna Smith, who is with us. Thank you, Jenna, for coming. You are always a delight to have with us. What news do you have to Gloucester High School?
I have a whole lot for you at Gloucester High School. So this is arguably the most exciting for people who are into sports. Last night, the boys' basketball team had their first playoff game. It was home. Student section was USA themed. It was pretty cool. It was a really good student section. We won against Auburn, and the next game is in Braintree Friday night. They're playing a private school. I don't remember the name. But Friday night in Braintree, be there. It'll be fun. Tomorrow night is the first round playoffs for the hockey team, which is going to be so exciting. It is Fisherman themed. So if you guys go there, it's home, so it's like easier than the basketball game on Friday. So I definitely recommend going tomorrow. They're playing Hamilton. And wear maroon. If you have like the big yellow Fisherman things, wear that. I know I'll be wearing that. So come support your boys. It'll be so fun. They're playing O'Malley. During the homeroom blocks, we're starting this new thing so that we get more like student voices involved like within the schools and like making advancements and stuff. So members of student council are going around to each homeroom. And we have like surveys. And like every day that we go, homeroom days are every third day. So we're going to go to the homerooms every third day. And we have a different survey every time we go. And we ask like the homeroom like for their input. We write it down, and then all the responses will be given to administration. So we can like try and just make life at GHS the best as it can be. In the Health Center, there has been 28 student volunteers this year from the Transition Program, National Alliance Society, English Learners, and like more places. But they were able to fulfill 247 free food locker orders. In addition to that, 131 contactless home deliveries. So that's awesome. That's actually huge for the free food locker. And it's insane that they've been able to accomplish that many orders. Next up, this week, the high school librarian, Mrs. Texara, wrapped up her ninth grade library orientation lessons. This year, the lessons were taught by Jenny San-Tamaro. I'm really sorry if she's here and I butchered that name. I'm not great with that. So she's at the Teen Services Librarian at Sawyer Free Library. So the lesson basically introduced ninth graders to both of like the library's resources, both digital and physical. In addition to that, they learn like the connection between the GHS library and the Sawyer Free Library, because a lot of students just like don't recognize and like aren't aware that they are connected and that both have many resources that are available to us. The ninth graders that were a part of that program, they're given a Sawyer Free card. So it was created for them in advance. They were given a card. Now they have even more access to all the resources that we're all like exposed to. So that's great. We have a bunch of, or we have four students who have either gotten awards in the arts or honorable mention. So the Scholastic Art and Writing winners, Alina Castro, she got the Silver Key Award for printmaking. For Kami Cooper and Seth Grover, both got honorable mention in printmaking. And then Vivian Marching got honorable mention in ceramics. So that's pretty cool, because like sports are like really highlighted at GHS. But it's really cool to see that there are so many people like the arts and like other programs are also getting recognized. Also in the arts, more theater. But on Saturday, the GHS Theater Program is going to, I'm going to butcher this, Algo Quinn, maybe? Regional High School. And they're participating in the Massachusetts Educational Theater Guild Drama Festival Celebration. That was a long name. But there's four of the schools from Massachusetts that are going. And they're going to perform the play from the fall, which was "In the Forest of the Night." The DECA State Conference has been approved because GEF is agreeing to fund the trip. So that's great for the business people at our school. They are able to go on their state trip, which is awesome. Like I have a bunch of friends that are going, and they're very psyched about that. So I'm very proud of them. NHS induction is March 24. And the inductees of NHS, they have either gotten their letters or they will be getting their letters very soon. They have been sent out. And finally, at GHS, we do this thing. It's like a door decorating contest. So like we had a Christmas door decorating contest fall. We just had Valentine's Day, and Mrs. Galais's class won that. And now we're doing St. Patrick's Day. And then probably after that, it'll be spring and summer. But yeah, I just want to let it all on you guys. Does anyone have any questions?
Sounds like an exciting time, that's for sure.
Definitely exciting.
I have a question. I have a question, but it's not anything regarding your report.
Yes.
So I'm curious, curious to know what the reaction was this week going back to school with having masks optional.
Okay, that is a great question. I kind of expected that one. So I'll be honest with you. I knew that was coming. So it was definitely kind of just like a culture shock. Like everyone's like, oh, my God. Like it's crazy that we can see each other's faces. Like I think that a lot of the staff and student body are pleased, like not to speak for everyone by any means. But a lot of us are pleased. Like it's exciting. It's new. Like I said to my friends, I was like, it's crazy, because last time I was able to see everyone's faces, like it was a completely different high school. Like I was a sophomore. So like I haven't seen like any of this year's sophomore or freshman classes' actual faces. But like I haven't heard of any bullying. Like I know that a big concern was like picking on kids for either wearing masks or not wearing masks. I haven't seen that at all. I think that everyone has been very respectable, respectful about it. And I think that honestly, we're just all trying to work together, get through the rest of the school year and make the best out of it.
Thank you for sharing that. Appreciate it.
Yeah. Anything else? One final thing, blood drive. We are doing a blood drive. I forget the date, but we are doing the blood drive.
Do you want to email me the date, and I can pass it along to all the members?
Yes, I will definitely do that.
Maybe you'll get some more participation.
Yeah, that'd be great. All right. Thank you guys so much once again.
Thank you. Thanks for joining us.
Bye.
Can you give that to me? I can also put it on, you can get it on social media as well. This is something they do at high school. I believe so, yeah.
Great, okay. The next item is the consent agenda. Does anybody have any items they would like to remove from the consent agenda? I would like to remove the school committee minutes from December 4, 2021. And only to ask Maria to put in our minutes the actual goals that we agreed to for the superintendent. So instead of just saying the committee approved, we'll actually have it on the face of that agenda so we don't have to go back and forth through different documents. Top line, not the whole chart.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so with, so are you taking it out? Or are you okay with, so now with it? So I move to approve the consent agenda?
Second, move.
Maria, we can have a roll call vote. And remember, Sam is still with us, I believe.
Okay. Mia Verdu.
Yes.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
Jefferson Clancy.
Yes.
Mr. Melvin.
Yes.
Mr. Minio.
Yes.
And Ms. Prince.
Yes. Consent agenda is approved. The next item is the liberations on educational issues and the superintendent's report. So we'll start with the superintendent's report.
Great, Ms. Clancy. So I'll start with a brief report, one of the brief reports I've ever given. And we'll see why in a moment. And then we'll get on to have some great guests for elementary schools, some fantastic educators. And they're going to give you a really thorough update on our K-5 learning benchmarks and the progress our students are making. So just share this quickly. So again, as we always say, as I always say, our primary objective is to safely educate all of our students in our schools every day to maximize learning, address our students' full needs, and support community and family needs, which we continue to do very, very well. So there's been, Jenna did a fantastic job, as she always does. And high school students updating folks is some of the great news and great things that are happening at high school. I don't need to do that. But since our last regularly scheduled meeting, we've had the 100th Day of School. Here you see Veterans on the left. And on the right is Beeman. One thing I really appreciate a lot about Gloucester Schools is that we still have great celebrations like 100th Day of School. Or in different ways, we also do the 101st Day of School. So right, what you see over there is Corella Di Pascarello reading out loud to a bunch of Dalmatians for the 100th Day of School. On the left, you see your superintendent at East Gloucester School. He was invited over, or at least his cabin's America Shield was invited over to visit Ms. Anflepo's classroom, because they were dressed up as superheroes like they'd like to do for the 100th Day of School. So some great stuff happening, just a mark sort of a milestone. What I learned when I was at, in Ms. Mary's class at Veterans was that the fifth graders, somewhere right around now, I believe, will be having their 1,000th Day of School. Which happens just in the fifth grade, sometime just after the 100th Day of School that year. So let's come in the fall, fifth graders, their 1,000th Day of School. So then just moving on a little bit. So masks. So here's some photos, here's from preschool. These are actually from today. So just you see a combination of things. Just what you see, school happening normally. You know, preschool, they're having some table time on the left. And you see some students are masked and unmasked. On the right, you see teacher, the rug area, they were looking at books. You see students who are unmasked. At West Parish today, gym class, combination of kids who are wearing masks and those who aren't. On the right, one of their third grade classroom, I believe, the same sort of thing. But again, kids doing school regularly. Some with masks, some without. Our staff as well, same thing. You see some photos here. These are, happen to be two photos where staff aren't wearing masks. But in plenty of classrooms that I've been in this week, staff have chosen to wear masks, which is great. And I'll reiterate what Jenna said. Here's some more photos of West Parish. That's a class on the left getting ready to go out for lunch recess. They're putting it on their worn clothes. And there's a small group there on the right-hand side just doing some table work. I think they might be working on math there. And then O'Malley as well. That's the aquaponics lab. On the left, I think their goldfish have been delivered this week that they are going to be feeding and taken care of. And then on the right is a, I think an eighth grade class. What you see there and you see in a couple of other classrooms is kids are still, we're still, in many classrooms having been distanced, you know, in terms of the regular seating. But you see a combination of kids wearing masks and not. On the left, you see staff who are wearing masks and some who aren't. So I'll reiterate in speaking to Principal Beatty and also Principal Cook, they both reporting there have not been any, they're not aware of any cases of folks teasing, harassing in any way, any folks putting their clothes on masks. So it's going very, very well. I also think we did a fairly good job communicating both from principals and for myself just after your meeting a couple of weeks ago and then just before the break to make sure parents knew. So that's going well. COVID update, just quickly here. We requested all at-home testing happened before the return from school vacation. So on Saturday or Sunday this week, both we requested of families and of staff. Our weekly COVID pool testing this week happened on Monday and Tuesday. We've gotten results from all locations except for Gloucester High and the preschool. It all has been negative. So all the at-home testing, no positives reported in the at-home testing and no positive so far been reported in this week's pool testing as well. So there's been no, at this point, no, there's been no post-scholarification increase in the schools in the city. All good, all good. Just a few more details. Say if you wait, just a few minutes before we get to your question. Is that okay? Keep on going.
Okay.
So we have a few more staff registered for at-home testing, total of four to 17. But since last week or the week before, 63 more students are testing. We're now participating in the at-home testing. Everyone is getting a new set of tests on Thursday, tomorrow. We'll get those delivered to them and take home and test on Friday morning. This is the Chambers family, Veterans. Their two children were the 1,000 students to register for at-home testing. So they received a gift card from their mom. We promptly handed it to their father who was there taking photo. But that's one of the Chambers sort of cake band gift checks, which can be used at like 200 different local businesses. So we're just trying to incentivize folks to sign up for that. And that, and actually, that, I'm not sure it was prompted by that, but we had that forward sign up shortly after that incentive, basically. So, but these two kids, they were great. Getting to some of the details, as we said, as I said two weeks ago, we keep on reporting to you and the community just where we are with COVID. Here's the last Friday's wastewater test. Again, continues to decline. It can't decline a whole lot more. But that little circle there on the right is getting smushed closer and closer to the zero line. So it continues to decrease. Great news, of course. We have a total of only five active cases in schools across all the schools as of today. So that continues to decline as well. That's the lowest number of cases we've had since October, since early October. Okay, I was looking at October 14. I think we had 13 cases, so even before that. And over the last two weeks, since the 16th, over the last two weeks, only 18 new cases have been reported in total. As you can see, October 27, there were five cases. So we're five cases again. But even before that, in October, there are more cases than this. So we're really at a pretty much a low for the year at this point, which is great news. These are all our vaccine percentages. It's slightly gone up a little bit in a few places. You know, what percentage point across elementary schools, St. O'Malley, up one percentage point in seventh and eighth, up a couple percentage points in ninth grade, and then also one percent point of 10th and 12th. So just, you know, little bit by bit here. 12th grade is for the first time at 80%, which is, I think, a decent, a good milestone. And then, as I mentioned, we do in-school vaccination clinics, clinics that with the Gloucester Department of Health. And that's, those start tomorrow. Not having a lot of signups yet. We are continuing to reach out, and we'll reach out. Veterans in West Parish will happen this week. West Parish may be delayed just because of lack of signups. And they might add those folks to another one upcoming. But we'll continue to advertise, continue to reach out so families are aware of these and other vaccination clinics that are happening in the area. So that's all I have for tonight. I think Sam might have a question.
Sam, do you have a question?
Yeah, thank you. Did we see an increase in pool testing registrations in addition to the home?
Yeah, I asked that today of Kylie Davis, and only six more registries for pool testing since we last met. So not a large number there.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. Any questions? I'll hand it over to Mr. Bach. I'll reserve the right to chime in and support all the great work you and the coaches are doing at some point in the year in the presentation.
Great, thank you. Just need to make sure I have the ability to share my script. Oh, yes, I did. Thank you, Maria.
You're welcome.
So I have a very brief part of this presentation tonight because we have a lot of people who've joined us tonight who are in the schools, doing that daily hard work. And I'd like to spend as little time as possible for me so that they can share the information and their experiences. I'm sure you're going to have some questions about how things have been going this year, kinds of impacts that we may have seen from the last two years of pandemic. We're ready to address some of those questions. But I'll just have you keep in mind that some of it is speculative. We don't really know. There's not an absolute direct correlation. We had some thoughts about it. But please don't hold anybody to a direct relationship between some of the things we're seeing and the pandemic disruptions. They're, you know, best guesses based on what we're seeing. We are not just going to show just the pure data slides. There are a few slides that I'd like to start with just to give new committee members just a brief overview of the kind of language that you'll hear our coaches and teachers talking about. We have members from the math and literacy coaching team tonight on the call. They're going to share a portion of, each a portion of the presentation. And we also have Krista Houghton, who is, uh, one of our, uh, elementary teachers joining us as well. Uh, she's also on the math leadership team and I want to thank her for, for joining us tonight. One of the terms that you probably have heard and will probably hear tonight, you'll hear a discussion about tiers. Uh, tier one, tier two and tier three. And, uh, the graphic on the screen may help understand the concept of, um, you know, for eighty to ninety percent of students, uh, the, you know, sort of universal, um, classroom instruction is, is what's, um, appropriate. And then there may be five to ten percent who need, uh, more intensive interventions and targeted support. And then tier three, uh, you know, one to five percent may need, uh, real individualized support. Now, those aren't exact percentages, never are. But this is sort of the rough idea of the sort of breakdowns and the proportions of those tiers. And you'll be hearing discussion about interventions, um, that are typically what we would consider tier two interventions. The next slide, I'll go quickly with this one, but you'll probably hear, uh, discussion about response to intervention, uh, known as RTI. And this really just describes a process that did, definitely did not exist during uh, the first ten years I was in the district, probably. Um, we did not have a regular, repeatable, focused cycle of looking at, um, the, the, the data that we have available, uh, identifying the kinds of needs that were, um, necessary for individual students. Monitoring progress, providing interventions that were consistent across the district. We just didn't have a system like that. So a lot of teachers, coaches and principals have worked very hard over the years to put in place a consistent process that you will see in all of our schools now. Um, where, uh, you'll hear, um, remember who's going to start off on the data. Melissa Francis, who is, uh, wanted to be in person, is not a big fan of the, um, the, uh, Zoom venue. I think probably because of some challenges with the technology in the last presentation, last spring. So, uh, I, we offered anybody who wanted to be in person to join us. Um, in case we had a glitch with technology, it was good to have a, somebody in the house too. Uh, so she's with us, but we also have, uh, her colleagues, um, on, on Zoom as well. Uh, so Melissa will lead us up, but she'll be talking a little bit about the data meeting process, which you've also heard about. That's part of the overall response to intervention. Those data meetings are one part of that. And I just also want to note that everybody is in on this RTI process. General education teachers, special education teachers, English language learner teachers, um, our, uh, our school psychologists, our clinical staff, our coaches, our principals. This is a, a huge team effort, takes a lot of organization. Um, but within that team effort, that's also a, a, a primary means of communication and collaboration around the needs of students. So we'll, they'll talk about the data and we'll talk about the data meetings. But I just want you to understand that they're part of this overall process where data is reviewed, interventions are identified, uh, progress is monitored, but also take a look at the, the materials, the training involved with those who are going to provide interventions. It's a very complex process, uh, that we've really worked hard to establish.
Greg, can you just go, that's what I want to think when you go back. So this, there's this process on this page, okay?
Yeah.
You just go backwards slide. Yep. What we like to think about it is if you look at the, at the, at the bottom tier, this is the tier that, of, of support, of instruction that every child gets every day. And the, and the RTI process that Greg is, is described in, in our, our coach will maybe go into detail about tonight. That helps us know how kids are doing with tier one instruction. Okay. And then the process that also helps us too, so is we understand how each child's doing. And we also learn to understand what other support some children may need. And not only just generalize it, but very specific type of support in which areas. Okay. So, but that's the crucial piece is it, it helps us on a regular basis. We don't, we don't wait for MCATs. On a very regular basis, know exactly how kids are doing, uh, with the tier one instruction. Are they getting it? It's making, helping them make, you know, real progress. And if not, then what do we do?
Yeah, that's a good point. It's all students. Um, that data meeting process is not just about a few students, it's about us.
And because some of the tools that we've, that we've, um, implemented over the last couple of years, which we'll learn more about tonight. So we're able to do that at a very specific level, uh, in a, in a way that's really helping us see the progress.
Just a quick question here. So I guess two questions, uh, Greg. Wouldn't all hundred percent of the students be in tier one or am I wrong in assuming that?
They are, uh, best, best way to.
Yeah. Can you go back this?
Yeah, go ahead. Cause I saw the eighty to ninety percent.
So do you see the blue triangle that they're all in there?
Yeah.
So a hundred percent receive tier one.
That's what I.
But we're, we're assuming eighty to ninety percent will be completely successful receiving tier one award. So yes, they are.
Make effective progress from the core curriculum. They respond to the core curriculum, make effective progress. They do not need anything in addition.
Yeah. No, that's a, that's a good point. You're right. All, it's all students. And all, and of those eighty to ninety percent may respond to that, that everybody.
And the RTI process, which is the next slide, that is, so we got the tier one, so the tier two and tier three kind of come out of that tier one. And that's where the RTI process kind of kicks in.
Pretty much, yeah. Cause then we're responding.
To the needs of.
To the need of the students and to, and then deciding on the interventions.
Gotcha.
Actually, let me clear, it's not about coming out, because they, they still get the tier one instruction. Now they might have something additional. An additional could happen in the classroom, in a small group. It could happen one to one in the classroom. It could happen outside the classroom with a coach or interventionist or tutor. So that, and that's what, what, what you do with a child is not making effective progress with just tier one instruction.
Yeah.
That's the purpose of the, of this product, the data process we're talking about is to identify what, where do they, in what areas need support, like what part of literacy or reading or writing, what part of math? And then, um, who's the right person or people to support them in that and what's the right intervention? That's what I'm thinking. So.
Coming out of tier one was the wrong choice of word, you're right. It's, it makes sense looking at the tier.
Yeah. And sometimes tier two can be as simply as they need more repetition and practice than they would receive in the everyday instruction. Or they may need some more multisensory opportunities that they can't receive in the twenty minutes that we had for the tier one instruction. It can be simple changes or it can be something more intense.
Yeah. Um, and I think from my experience in elementary schools, I think it informs how we ask parents to partner at home, right? Work on this, particularly at younger grades where you're trying to help them just practice reading aloud and, and things like that. So.
Absolutely. And I think that we're using the assessments not only for the tiered instruction, but we're using them to determine how well is our curriculum moving forward and where, and it highlights the needs there as well. So you'll see whole things happening.
And we do have a ways to go. And, oh, no, no, no.
No, it's great. This is important, yeah.
Good one to clarify upfront. Hopefully some of the other questions will be answered, uh, along the way. And if not, okay.
That's a big assumption, Doc.
Okay. So, um, sorry, I'm looking, hopefully this will move. There we go. Um, Melissa, if you could start us off with talking about the data meetings themselves, that process and where that fits in the RTI process.
Yep, and you can just jump to that.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, so basically what we do is we meet three times a year. And as discussed, it's a great opportunity for everybody involved to get around the table. Um, because it's always a great reminder that they are all of our students, whether it be the coach, the interventionist, the teacher, the parents, you know, the parents aren't in, around the table, but then all of that information is then communicated to them so that we're all on the same page, we have the same language. So we have a clear understanding of every student in the classroom. So we meet grade level and we also meet literacy and math. So that we have the opportunity to really discuss every student for, you know, right from enrichment, right down to intensive needs. And we have the special education involved. We have the school psychologist, the principals involved. So everybody in the building is aware, this is what's happening. And then we use the assessments to then track the progress of those students that were discussed. And we decide a plan for them. We have an intervention plan. And then we say, okay, they need progress monitoring, which is an opportunity for us to then assess them again, whether it be twice a month or once a month, depending on the areas of need. And then we'll make little tweaks and changes along the way to their instruction to make sure we're actually targeting their needs and they're showing progress over time. And then we meet, like I said, three times, fall, winter, spring. Um, and hopefully what we see is closer to that mark of the ninety percent, eighty, you know, eighty to ninety percent of students, um, being really successful. Um, and that's what we're doing for both literacy and math. And we, um, have opportunities as coaches, we work with obviously the teachers, but we also work with our interventionists. And that's a big piece of our job is to make sure that all of the people are communicating so that the students aren't hearing Greek in the classroom and then Spanish with their interventionist. We want to be sure that everybody's communicating and sharing the same language, sharing the same information. Um, and a lot of it is just about celebrating successes too, and having that opportunity to talk about the good stuff that's happening, uh, in every day in the classroom as well. So yes, there's problem solving, but there's a lot of great opportunities to celebrate all of the good things that are happening. And I can say that foundational skills for literacy has been one of those amazing things that we have seen a trajectory of progress over time. Now our next goal seems to be the vocab and the comprehension for elementary school. So we sustain through middle school and high school. Um, so we're looking at pilot programs. So as I said, we're working on interventions, but we're also looking to see how our curriculum is working for our students as well. So I love the data meetings. We may have to find a better term for them, but I love what they do. Um, so it's really an opportunity for us all to.
And I want to make sure, um, I, I already heard somebody, uh, jumping in, but I want to make sure that.
It was Shannon.
Okay, Shannon. I really encourage the group to, to really just jump right in and, and think of this as a scene when there's one big room. Go ahead, Shannon.
So Shannon Barowski, I'm the math coach at Beaman School. I'm just picking back, piggybacking off of what Melissa said, that's exactly how the process runs. I just wanted to add in there also that it's not just for a response to intervention, but it's also how the team can collaborate on how we can enrich our learners as well. We might see in the data that there's students that are working above grade level in a certain sense. So then the whole team can collaborate. How can we boost those students as well? How can we group them cohesively so that their learning to their best abilities as well? It's not just to respond to interventions.
That answers my, my question. Is there like another, uh, you know, side to this coin as far as like, you know, identifying students who were, you know, who could use extra challenges?
When we say that we target every student, we literally discuss every student.
And this slide really does highlight that, that we talk about the needs and the enrichment. There are obviously students who need more support, but then there are students that we do book clubs with, or writing challenges, or math challenges. Um, so we have an opportunity to group students to maybe even cross classrooms before pandemic times. Um, hopefully we're getting back to that time. Um, so, and we've definitely made a lot of adjustments along the way because of the last couple of years. It's really impacted the way that we've been thinking about the grouping and things like that too. So like I said, hopefully our next data meeting, we can talk about how we can start to do some of the things that we've lost with the last couple of years as well.
Sometimes also we've had teachers advocate that they would like to re-collaborate the team within a shorter amount of time because there might be a student that's struggling a little bit. But once they get a shorter intervention, they could be released from that intervention more quickly. So there are times where the team will reconvene at a quicker notice to get those kids in and out and move in and make sure everybody gets what they needs, need.
I'll jump in there, Shannon. Actually, we have, um, at my schools that scheduled for the next two weeks. We're going to do like a little mini data meeting, just a little, um, check in, um, at the, um, teachers' common planning time to just say, okay, we have a little bit more data now. Do we need to make any adjustments? Do you have any, you know, students you want to talk about, highlight or anything that's popped up to discuss? So we have those scheduled this, just in the middle of March, this month.
I'd say that's pretty common across schools that we meet intermittently between data meetings. So this next slide, oh, you want to talk, Greg?
No, go ahead. You're up.
Um, so this next section of the presentation is going to highlight some of the literary, literacy assessments that we utilize to look at students' skills in literacy. So, um, both those early literacy skills building into reading text and comprehension. Um, so two of the things we use are Dibbles and STAR three sixty. Um, the Dibbles really looks at those early literacy skills, the building blocks, um, that come together for students to be readers and, um, to comprehend basic text. And then the STAR three sixty is more of like the vocabulary piece, um, and understanding of, um, more complex texts. So we've been utilizing Dibbles for a long time. We segwayed into a newer version recently within the last couple of years. And STAR three sixty was new as of last year. Um, we're going to dive into the Dibbles first, but this slide is just highlighting across the data that, um, we've noticed some things, um, just looking at the snapshots of the district data. Just that, you know, we're suspecting that the, um, pandemic and the amount of COVID cases and the disruption on learning, um, that we had in January, we did see some scores that weren't typical. Um, so we were thinking that that could be a possibility of why. Um, and we did notice that some of the fall scores were lower in some areas, but that we've had a lot of great growth to the mid-year benchmark. Um, we also were looking at the upper grade levels, like three, four and five. That foundational skill area has been strong and continues to be a focus area. We have a lot of students that are reading really well with great accuracy. And then, um, once we've gotten them there, we can segue to continuing to develop the upper grade comprehension and vocabulary. So these next slides are going to look at district level data for grade levels. So Dibbles, um, the dynamic indicators of basic early literacy skills measures those foundational literacy skills and each grade level will have a series of sub-tests. So what you would see a kindergartner doing would be very different than what you would see a third grader doing. But those sub-tests, um, we have like letter naming fluency, phoneme segmentation fluency, nonsense word fluency, word reading fluency. We look at their oral reading ability and their accuracy when they're reading. And, um, there's a task called the maze that looks at their ability to semantically figure out what words fit into a text, which is a measure of comprehension. Um, so those sub-tests, depending on the grade levels, are computed together to make a composite score. So what you'll see in the next few slides are composite scores. So that's taking that amalgamation of all those sub-tests and putting it into one score that's predicting, um, progress or risk. So you'll see that the red would be intensive, the yellow would be strategic. Um, green would be core and then blue is core plus. So we're looking for students, um, the goal is to get students into the green and blue area. And we are always aiming to cut the intensive by half. So where we start at the beginning of the year, we're hoping by the end of the year, students, um, in that category have been cut by at least half. So you can see in kindergarten for this year, there's still some areas of need. Um, and so as we were talking about in prior slides, this is kind of a snapshot and then we would dig deeper and look at, you know, individual classrooms and student level data to really pinpoint, um, the exact areas of need. But this will just give a, um, overview of what all five elementary schools are looking like at this point in the year. So if you're looking at the, um, core and core plus, which is our goal, we started with twenty-nine percent and we're now at forty-seven. So Greg, we could do to go to grade one. So this is our first grade data. As you can see, um, we started off the year with about forty-six percent of the students in the green or blue and now we're at fifty-nine percent. Um, and one thing about first graders, um, they've spent a lot of the year building those literacy skills that are the building blocks for oral reading fluency. So first grade is really the time, um, where we're seeing that sub-test introduced for the first time, where it's an expectation that they're translating those early literacy skills into reading text. And for a lot of kids in first grade, it's really typical for that stuff to kind of come together. Um, so that those early skills, um, have come to a point where they're being able to develop into the ability to read text and, um, the fluency and their rate and accuracy. Um, so as we continue through the rest of the year, that sub-test for oral reading fluency will continue to see a lot of growth. So here for grade two, you can see for the school year, we started with about sixty-two percent in core and core plus. We're now at sixty-seven percent. Um, grade two is definitely a year where, um, coming in, kids that have their oral reading fluency, um, kind of underway are starting to attend more to comprehension, um, and understanding from the text. So sometimes we see it take a little bit of time for, um, that to translate to some, the test we'll look at next, which is the STAR test. Um, but you can see there's been, um, some of the, some definitely some progress, but the skills have been maintained with the moving benchmark. So in grade three, we started off the year with sixty-eight percent of our students at the. So in grade three, we started off the year with sixty eight percent of our students at the core or core plus. And we're now at seventy three percent. And um this is the year where we see a lot of um kids transitioning from that learning to read and those skills really developing into the vocabulary and comprehension plate piece that we'll look at later.
And it's actually very interesting, third grade, usually from beginning to middle in Dibbles, you may see a dip because they're actually slowing down to think about what they're reading and reread and start to understand and focus on the vocabulary. Um, you don't see that here, but it's not unusual. Um, and if you look at different classes, do you see that a little bit? Because they are making that transition into vocabulary comprehension.
So we had highlighted in one of the first slides that the upper grade levels had some strong foundational skills. And um I think this slide is a good example of that. For grade four, uh, they started out at the beginning of the year with sixty six percent of the students at core or core plus, meeting those benchmarks, and now they're at seventy percent.
I often look at fourth and fifth grade, which we didn't highlight here, but we always can next time when we look at the end as the accuracy scores and the foundational skills really sustain over time. And we see that in the fourth and fifth grade accuracy. They're real readers at ninety eight, ninety nine percent accuracy. Um, so they're really able to focus on the good stuff, like you say, the vocabulary.
Comprehension and vocabulary.
So I just want to ask a question to Greg, if I may. So Greg, years ago, um, and I wouldn't be able to put it into how many years ago. We were, I think it was when we were talking about curriculum mapping through the case inside. Um, we had found that there was a constant yearly issue with fourth grade.
Just talking about that today.
Oh, okay. But this doesn't seem to reflect that issue. So I know we were trying to figure that out. I'm just wondering, did we figure out the reason? Is that coming up?
So where where that was showing up is going to be captured.
Okay.
Not completely captured, but uh some indication in the STAR data.
I thought you solved the problem. That was a mystery for us.
I've been working on it.
I'm working on it.
We can talk about it.
And if you remember, it was a statewide.
It was, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. It was probably like eight years ago, right? Nine years ago?
Yeah, yeah. So um um Melanie, did you want to?
Sorry.
Was it something you want to finish on this this slide?
Just thinking through like the type of assessment this is, you know, we are looking at those literacy skills. Um, you know, as the title suggests, early literacy, basic early literacy skills. And as Melissa highlighted, um, you know, in our fourth and fifth grade, we see almost all kids with really high rates of accuracy and the ability to sustain that over time and then apply that to the parts of text and understanding text um that we'll see in the next set of data. Um, will bring us to kind of the little bit of a discussion, you know, what what is strong about our curriculum and what things we might need to be looking toward to kind of tweak and change and address what our needs are. So we have um with what we've been doing, some really strong data in our foundational skills. And we're looking at how we can strengthen other areas of our curriculum to support things like comprehension and vocabulary and thinking skills.
And this is just.
This is the composite or composite scores for all of the grades put together. So it's kind of like looking at all five elementary schools with all six grades um and just kind of being able to see everyone all together, you know, where where we are in one one graph. Which is, I mean, just looking at it, more than half of our kids are core or core plus, so they're meeting those benchmarks.
And um I don't want to misquote, but we had a um been working with a a literacy consultant who just recently at a a pilot meeting was talking about these foundational skills and how um, you know, in working with lots of different districts across the state. Um, and I think she said she really couldn't point to a lot of districts that really were showing this kind of success, sustained success over time. So that was nice to hear.
And our middle school reading book, just the same as well.
Yeah, yeah. So uh just to put those in context. Um, then once you're going to talk briefly about zones of growth.
Yes. So I decided to shift the focus because um with my group of teachers this year, and this is a report that we all similar, you know, we use, some of us use it, some of us don't, but we all have the same language and discuss it in the same way. I obviously took off the students, but I just used as a sample um to show you. It can get a little discouraging when a student's out for twenty times because of the pandemic and, you know, and they're starting in a different place. So when you see them coming in in red, you have to shift your focus a little bit and think, okay, we have to focus on progress. Right? We have to take them where they are and continue to show progress, even with the disruptions and learning and remote and, you know, the change of the way that we were instructing before. So this did a really nice job of that. You can set the goal to say if they are in intensive need or strategic need, we can set the goal for ambitious growth. And then it's our job to make sure we're providing the intervention, repetition and practice, multisensory, whatever it is that they need. And the goal is set to see if they can make ambitious growth over the year's time. So the idea is that we're closing the gap, even though they're starting in a bigger deficit in some cases, we're making sure that we're closing that gap. So yes, they're coming in red and they may be staying red a little longer than we were hoping. Um, we're showing that they're still making progress over time. So if you look at just even the first four, student came to us reading eleven words. Now is at forty five. The goal was ambitious growth. So the student's goal is fifty nine. They're already at forty five. The goal for the end of year is fifty nine. So are they on track? Yes. And how many months of growth have they made? Eight months of growth. We've only had them for three and a half, you know, at the time when we did this assessment. So you can see how much progress they can make with the effective interventions and instruction in place. Um, so that was just an example. And some of them, you notice, I probably said their goal's a little too high, ambitious growth, even if they were already at benchmark. So they may not be making ambitious growth, but they're making just fine growth. They're making average growth. Um, so that might be a student I'd be like, okay, I can challenge them to work a little harder here to make that ambitious growth. And they would be one of the ones that may not show that they're making the ambitious growth. Yes.
Thank you.
What determines, what goes into setting the goal? I mean, what, why is the goal fifty nine? Why isn't it sixty two?
But it's, the system does that for me to calculate the number. But it's based on how many weeks and based on how many words per week that they have set as ambitious, as an ambitious game, and that's based on the research. Um, I can't remember exactly, but it was like three words per week was average growth for a first grader. But point five words per week is average growth for a fourth grader. So that's why we try to close the gap earlier on because they can learn. It's all about the brain. So we want to make sure that we're setting those goals realistically for the students in promise, too.
I I wanted to have this slide included because um I I thought it would be good for you to know that across all of the schools, that all the teams are setting goals for individual students.
Yes.
And that the the tools that we have available to us are actually giving this uh student level detail and allowing the sort of the real granular focus to um track and set a goal and and measure the progress of that. And that's probably by the 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 software to do that. But um that's a practice that across our schools, they are, you know, they're looking at at an individual student level and math that goes out. It's pretty, it's a very different world than um when I was in school, for sure.
And I think it can get a little discouraging, you know, for the interventionist, for the teachers, for everyone to still see red. So when you show this and you say, look how many months growth they've made in such a short period of time, yes, they may still be considered in red, but the progress is there. So what you're doing is actually working. So we just have to state the course and continue to do that work. Yes. Okay.
Trying to follow. Uh, yeah, you last slide, please. Can you explain uh what that means by months of growth? These are examples of specific students with their names removed, right?
Yes, yeah.
Um, and so I'm trying to understand what the months of growth mean. I mean, I.
So what they're, they base it on, say, the three words per week, right? So they're saying they made well above and beyond that. So within a month.
It's a calculation.
Right, it's a calculation. So within a month, they would do twelve words, but they're saying they were able.
They're in a calendar thing.
No, it's not a calendar thing.
What they are saying is that they're they're, they've made eight months of typical growth.
Yeah.
Right, in three months.
Yeah, you know. That's a, you know, you can tell, actually, maybe it needs your individual students, right?
Yes, yeah.
So, you know, ultimately, almost everybody's students has made, you know, more than expected growth in the in the three and a half months. Means our instruction is really, actually, if they're working.
It's working.
Kathy, can I jump in?
Oh, sure. Go ahead, Sue.
Thank you. Sorry, guys, I am here. Um, um, can you go back? I'm sorry, it's the last. Thank you. So I guess I'm trying, how and who um communicates some of these goals to parents? Like, um, I guess I'm trying to, I'm trying to think about how to say this. Um, how do we loop parents in to be sort of allies and to um work on this, these goals? Uh, not just in the classroom, but outside the class.
Yeah, we have a number of coaches. Is there, are there any coaches uh online who would like to address this one? How that sort of loop of information is shared with teachers and with with parents?
Which I, I think it's because it's Melanie and I and we're talking about literacy, so. But I can just quickly talk about that. Um, it's in a variety of ways, and I think it depends on the school. Uh, the coaches sometimes will reach out. Sometimes we have the discussion with the classroom teacher and then they will reach out. We will share similar reports that are at the student level. Um, and then give suggestions of what you can do to help at home. Obviously, just reading with your child every night is always where we start. Um, but there are different ways that we can communicate the need, but it's usually either the coach talking with the parents or the classroom teacher talking with the parents.
I would also just add to that, that a lot of times we have conversations with the students, too. So we kind of let them know what progress they're making and um, you know, I had like a lunch bunch today and they were asking where where did they start out, you know, how much progress? And so I don't necessarily give exact numbers, but I might say that, you know, you're you're reading a hundred more words than you were when you started. And it's because, you know, what are you doing at home that's helping, helping with that? And um where we look at like where they come in from summertime. How much reading did you do at home over the summer? And how do you think that that contributed to, you know, where you where you came back to school in September? So there's a lot of conversations with students, too.
Can I just add one question or follow-up question? Um, so we're lucky enough to sort of know that you guys exist and we're so grateful for you. I'm sort of wondering how, you know, how how do parents become introduced to the work that you do and who you are and how you're working with kids? Because I'm not sure if every parent sort of understands the depth of work that you do with every single student.
I can speak on that if everybody doesn't mind. Um, like for example, at my school, um, we already had a kindergarten information night, which I was present for. Um, we're usually at, we can attend parent-teacher conferences if a teacher requests us to do so, or we can even offer to do so if we have a child that we may be concerned about, or we'd like to discuss the child excelling. Um, there's a lot of nights that we actually do attend and the principals, I think, do a very good job with the parents of being transparent with them, putting the face to the name. And we're on directories. Um, I know I send some stuff home to parents, like through the school, introducing myself as the math coach, and these are things that are going on, um newsletters. My principal puts me as the beam and buzz sometimes. So they do introduce us to those in those kind of respects.
I'll say we are like introduced at nights when the parents and families come to the school. And then I have a number of parents who do email me on a regular basis with, can I have an update? Can you, my student said they just took the benchmark. Can you just put that into context for me? What does that mean? Can you give me an update on my child's progress? So hopefully, uh, more and more parents have that comfort and open line of communication to us. But I do, I think Melissa and Price are the same, we do have parents who do reach out directly to us um at a, at the school level.
I think sometimes, too, classroom teachers, you know, might come to us, you know, a parent called and is concerned about so-and-so's literacy or reading. And, you know, I'd really like to answer them, you know, with very specific information. And they might ask for some help, you know, could you reach out to the parent? You know, could you share how they're doing and what, you know, what could be helpful? So sometimes, you know, I get into conversations with parents in that venue. I know, you know, a lot of times at the beginning of the year, I send home kind of a letter introducing myself and offering myself as a resource if you need any extra help or have any questions. And so sometimes I'll get phone calls or phone calls or emails that way from parents.
And teachers can often refer parents to us if they want to have a more thorough conversation about um a particular question or concern.
Thank you. Super helpful.
We're still gonna, all ways to go, so.
STAR three sixty, that's me. Um, STAR three sixty is a computer-based assessment that we took on or um transitioned to fall of twenty twenty. So last year when we were coming back um in a very different circumstance, we um took this on as well. And teachers have been extremely patient and open-minded, um, having online PDs and trainings, um, getting themselves comfortable with this assessment. Um, like I said, it's grades one through five. It's a computer-based assessment. Um, students can take early literacy or there's what the STAR reading, and then there's the STAR math. Um, there's also an option for the test to be given in Spanish. Um, and we often will do that with some newcomers um at the beginning of the year or when they when they arrive. Um, the test is adaptive, so the questions are changing live time as the students are answering them and they're getting more difficult um or increasing, increasing or decreasing the difficulty based on student performance. Um, with the being adapted, the um it's individualized, so every student does have their own um test. Nobody's is the same. Um, these are given three times a year for those data meeting benchmarks. We also do give them um as progress monitors as well. One reason why we switched to the STAR is because it has that short testing time. Um, it's an average of twenty, twenty to thirty minutes that it takes, so it doesn't take up the whole math block. Um, we are able to um build accommodations for extended time as well as audio of reading piece turned on for math only, and obviously not for reading. Um, and then the reporting is very thorough. We are able to get detailed um standards-based reporting, breakdowns by domain. Um, with the reporting, we can get details of skills that individual students need to work on um by standard, but also by grade level. So if they're performing out of grade level, whether above or below, it will tell us where they're ready to jump in and learn. Um, and then we're able to also group students. So if we've determined through that process of making groups of either three or six students, say, we can then run some reports to see commonalities and needs within that group. So we're able to do that at planning. So it's very helpful in that process for planning our intervention groups. I know teachers have also been using the reporting to not only reflect on their practice and reflect on the program's effectiveness and if something, you know, was successfully mastered by students or if there's something they need to go back and review. Um, but they've even used it for their own goal setting for the year. So if they're doing their, you know, teach point goals, they may be used this information to guide um where they may want to focus for that. Um, there is MCAS predictability. I still think we need some more time on that. Um, last year, the MCAS was modified to one test. So I don't think that we're comfortable yet saying, oh, this number really is a predictor of um success or um on the MCAS. But I will say that from fall twenty twenty till now, we have already made some adjustments. We went in in the fall using what's called the district norms of expectation, and those are really the national expectations. Um, we use this in the fall and we saw that really their expectations or their benchmark was just too low. So when we ran the reports, we're like, ooh, lots of green, like. So when we ran the reports, we're like, ooh, lots of green, like everything is going wonderfully. And then when we realized we could switch it to state, which is really more in line with the Massachusetts expectations, which we know Massachusetts has high expectations, um, it seemed more in line, more, um, appropriate. So, for example, a class that would be run with district expectations would be 85% in the blue and green. You switch that to state expectations, and that same class now only has 38% meeting or exceeding. So we are now running all our reports, um, with state expectations.
I'm actually gonna illustrate that for you while.
Oh, right. I didn't know if you had it in there. So I ran, when you were, I ran my own because I wasn't sure if it was in there.
Yeah, um, just gonna jump in.
We adjusted that, and that was one of the things we've done since implementation. I know we talked a little bit about this last year. Um, that was something that we decided, you know, we're going to go with that higher expectation. The data might look a little more bleak, but it is more realistic. And we're hoping that this is going to align with predictability to the MCAS. We're not quite sure yet, but maybe this year, we're seeming to be moving towards more normalcy. So we'll be ready to make those certainties with alignment.
Yeah, and I'm just gonna, uh, this is super quick because we do have a number of slides on the data we need to get to. But, um, to illustrate that point, uh, grade five ELA, um, you'll see, uh, the fall and winter comparisons, um, and the cat, the group of meeting or exceeding. Um, is, um, at, at, at winter is 39% in fifth grade. But if we look at the, uh, national norms, same exact scores, fall at 86%.
Mm-hmm.
Percent, so, um, the, the, um, the, the teachers here, we, again, I want to caution that we don't have lots of years to look at a lot of longitudinal data in our district. But this is just to highlight, uh, what Kristin was talking about, where if we had, we're using the, uh, the national norms, uh, this is where our students would fall, uh, according to, to the STAR 360. But.
Yeah, it just gives us a real, you know, sense of reality and what we need to focus on.
Yeah, um, but that's not good enough. And Massachusetts has, uh, some of the highest standards in the country. And so, um, we're working with a, a much more, uh, challenging set of standards. And we're gonna see where, over time, where that aligns to MCAS. We can't say that right now. But I just, we just wanted you to know that, uh, we're using the much, much tougher standards, and, and we'll see what the, the match is.
And we had teachers on board for that. So we gave them both of those reports last year when we first began using this. And teachers were all on board of like, oh, yes, this, this is much more indicative of the students in front of me. I totally agree with these state expectations. So we, um, switched right over to them. So all of the data you'll see tonight, you won't be hearing from me, but somebody else, um, will be using those state expectations, not the national normed ones, which they call district. So we are already adjusting and, and keeping our expectations high. I think that's all on STAR 360, unless you have any questions about the general assessment before we dive into the STAR data itself.
And I think we all.
Sorry, I could just add in, um, a situation that happened at my data meeting real quick about what happened with the STAR 360 data. Um, for example, I was meeting with one of my grade levels, and one of the teachers had said, you know, student X, Y, and Z scored a little lower than what I would expect. So right at that data meeting, we pulled up the group report where those students may have had some gaps, and it happened to be a specific grade level number sense. So I had said, okay, I'm going to pull those students for the next five weeks. I'm working specifically on the number sense standard that STAR 360 has addressed is their gap. And then we will run the data again next week. And just like Kristin, we're doing our mini data meetings next week, and we can assess and see if those students close that gap at all and can be released from that RTI.
Thank you. Could we, um, I think Melanie, right?
No, it's actually me, but.
It's back to you, Melissa. Okay. Um, just to orient to, Melissa's gonna run through quickly the next few slides for ELA STAR 360. Just to visually, when you're quickly looking at those, this is the pattern we want to see, which is, uh, an increase from fall to winter, blue to orange, um, in the meeting or exceeding. You want to see that second bar going up, which it did, 40 to 55. And you want to see the not meeting and the partially meeting going down. So just as a quick orientation.
Yeah, which we are, we'll fly through. Um, but basically, second grade's really exciting to see because that's when they're still decoding. So to see this here is amazing. Um, Kathy said, that's good news, but go ahead, Greg. And you can see, um, the third grade, it went up with meeting and exceeding, slightly up with partial, but it dropped in not meeting. So some of those not meeting went partial, which is also good news. And then the fourth grade, again, slightly up for meeting and exceeding, slightly down partial, and slightly down in not meeting. Fourth grade. It's just that. Um, but this overall, and we'll quickly show you fifth grade as well. Um, but overall, this has highlighted our need as our curriculum, before our curriculum. We're doing pilot programs, um, right now, and they're really both focusing on building background knowledge. This is heavy, this assessment is heavy on vocab and comprehension. Our newest, new curriculums that we are piloting will also be heavy on vocab and comprehension, um, in a much better format than what we were previously using with Reading Street. Um, you know, better you do better, and that's what we're doing. So we are definitely trying out two different pilot programs. The teachers are loving both, and they said, no matter what, please just don't make me go back to Reading Street. So we're on the right track, we're doing the right things. We haven't made any decisions yet, um, but the good news is I think it will target both, and we will start to see the movement that we've seen in our foundational skills. We'll see that same movement in the STAR results, we're hoping. And then obviously, this will correlate to the MCAS as well.
And, uh, next slide.
Was that picking up?
That was good. Uh, uh, this was the, the national hard one, just so you could take a quick look at that again. Um, and then, um, math.
And this is me again. Um, I'll very briefly talk about ENI, um, which is something we hadn't talked about. It's sort of like the DIBELS of mathematics. It's given in kindergarten and first grade. It is, um, the early numeracy. There's number identification, sequencing, and quantity discrimination, which one's larger? Um, and these are one-on-one, um, prompts giving, one-minute prompts given one-on-one to students. Um, I'm really excited to share that because we have seen, um, surprisingly strong growth in our kindergarten and first grade this year. So we're really excited for you to see that. Um, and overall in math, we are seeing a steady growth in all grade levels. Um, I do want you to keep in mind that we are in the first year of implementation of the new math curriculum that you heard from us last year, Ask You For. So we are rolling that out in the middle of our pandemic. Um, and we are seeing, and we did see some evidence of disruption, um, January, when we were giving our, um, benchmark assessments was when we sort of saw the peak of COVIDs. We had huge absences and makeups, and, um, I personally saw a little bit of a dip. I think December was a little stronger than, um, January. But again, that's just my anecdotal observation. Um, ah, and then maybe just a cumulative effects of the pandemic. But here is ENI in kindergarten. We have 71% of kindergarten students meeting or exceeding right now using that ENI, um, information. So very exciting, and we continue to target those students, um, not meetings. Those students are in our interventions, and we have kindergarten-specific interventions. Um, we have the classroom, full-time classroom parrot typically is the, um, person providing that intervention in the classroom. So very excited about the progress and success we've seen in kindergarten.
Just briefly, uh, Kristin, how have you been using ENI for a while? How does that compare to a pre-pandemic, um, mid-winter benchmark, that 71%?
This is high. This is one of our best years, Greg.
Yeah. Just wanted to.
At the beginning of the year, we, you know, teachers were, um, concerned because we are seeing kindergartners who hadn't been to preschool, and they were really, were lacking some independent skills. Um, and they came in, you know, you know, alarms, lights going off, like, oh, these kids are well. They haven't had preschool, and they are really rising to the occasion responding to the teaching. So kudos to our kindergarten teachers and our kindergarten students. Um, and similar, kid, first graders, again, are, um, working hard and plugging along, and we are really happy with the progress we see there. We do have students, um, that not meeting category just only went down a little bit. So again, they are on our radar, they are in our groups, and, um, we are working on it. But you'll see that that partially meeting group went down pretty significantly. So progress being made, and we are very, very happy with, um, ENI in kindergarten and first grade. I am not STAR 360, so.
Hi, I'm Mindy Icorn. I'm the math coach at West Parish. And Jen, do you want to introduce yourselves?
Hi, I'm Jen. I'm Conrad, and I am the coach at Plum Cove.
And we're gonna be tag teaming on this, um, STAR 360 for our grades one through five. Um, we're seeing continued strong growth in grade one here with the meeting or exceeding going up and then not meeting going down. So great news for first grade. Second grade, we're seeing a little bit of an increase in terms of meeting or exceeding and a little bit of decrease in not meeting. Similar case for grade three. And here again is our grade four. Um, so while they have increased in their meeting or exceeding, and their not meeting is decreasing, we still have a lot of students, um, who are partially meeting. And, um, we've been kind of talking about that as coaches. Jen, do you want to share a little bit about?
Um, sorry?
Go ahead.
Um, so we just, um, with our partially meeting, whether we're just trying to strengthen and change up our groups as we go for our not meeting. And just like that was mentioned earlier, we are trying to enrich our students, um, as those students that get, you know, move up into the meeting or exceeding, we continue to push them and challenge them. And, um, and at Plum Cove, we meet monthly, so we're able to, um, make sure that no one's falling through the cracks and we're, um, meeting their needs as we move forward.
When you say that, uh, Plum Cove, you're meeting monthly. So in addition to the, the three-time-year data meetings, you have a set monthly meeting with this, is it same team or, uh, just classroom teacher? Who is, who are involved with those monthly meetings?
At the monthly meetings, it's usually the ELA coach, the math coach, the classroom teachers, and our principal attends the monthlies.
And grade five?
So, um, here again, the meeting or exceeding has increased. Um, however, the not meeting has also increased slightly. Um, and as we think about grades four and five, we really think about the impact and of the cumulative effects of the pandemic in terms of that deep conceptual understanding that, um, our Math and Focus curriculum really focuses on in terms of the concrete representational or pictorial and abstract. So, um, some of these students may not have had, um, as much access to manipulatives or that repeated practice with the manipulatives in terms of fractions, multiplication. Um, there's some, some skills that, that might have been impacted, um, in regards to those, those opportunities.
Back to me.
So we're, um, you've seen data from across, um, the subjects and the grade levels. You heard about the RTI process. And one of those components in that RTI process is, um, you know, what do you do after the, after those sort of benchmark data meetings? And Melissa, maybe you can wrap up with progress monitoring.
Yeah, and this actually touches on Samantha's question as well. There is, this is a sample report because I just wanted to grab one for reference. This can track a student's trajectory over time to show if the intervention and the instruction is working. So you can see the little dots are basically, are they on track to make progress? And DIBELS has something very similar. So we can share those reports in conversations with parents because we're only talking about their student, their child. Um, so these are really great so that we can show the interventionist, like, keep on, keep it on because they are on track or, whoa, there's a huge dip here. We need to revisit and think about, um, changing the instruction a little bit so that we can continue that progress. So this is just a nice, um, visual of the reports that we use to have those discussions with parents and teachers and, um, all that are involved.
Maybe right here, we could just take a quick opportunity to just, um, highlight Mrs. Houghton, who's a classroom teacher. We haven't heard from her yet. Um, and her perspective are either on data meetings or progress monitoring or any of the assessments along the way, because I think she does probably see it from a slightly different perspective than, um, the coaches that you've been hearing about tonight, hearing from.
Yeah, and, and, uh, again, thank you, Kristin, for joining us. There may also be something that you might like to share as a, as a math leader. Um, you know, how the updated math program is, is working for you and your students and what you're seeing in the classroom.
She piloted, she piloted during the pandemic last year and, and was continuing this year.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, so this is, I'm Krista Hoven. I teach East Gloucester fifth grade math. Um, so I live and breathe it since we platoon. Um, I've been in the district for eight years. And again, like they're saying, I was able to pilot the program last year and kind of see the full implementation this year. Um, and one of the things I'm really noticing, despite last year being half-days, is there wasn't as many disruptions with students. Um, there wasn't as many students absent. Um, a lot of times, we have kids that are out one, two weeks and, you know, from sicknesses or we're being close contacts and just being safe in general. So it's playing a lot of catch-up. And what I'm noticing as a fifth-grade teacher is that a lot of times, I'm teaching fourth-grade material first and then fifth-grade material. So I'm really a four-five teacher as opposed to strictly a fifth-grade teacher. And I'm also really giving myself some grace and the students' grace and understanding that a slower pace doesn't mean that I'm not doing my job. Um, it just means that I'm meeting the needs of my students and making sure that they're feeling confident and comfortable, and I can say that I'm confident and comfortable in their skills. So that's definitely something that's been tricky with pacing, even though in comparison to the previous version of Math and Focus, um, it's more, um, condensed and in the information chapters are a little bit shorter. There's still so much information to go through. So I'm really kind of doing my best to stretch everything out. And again, making sure that, not only that the data represents the students, but also the in-class work that we're doing, like on the ground, really making sure that they're feeling, um, the best versions of themselves. And data meetings are just another opportunity for me to really sit down and take a breath because we never sit down and take breaths, um, to see what our kids are doing, talk about the whole student. And, you know, yes, a data is, is data, but if a kid was out for two weeks or they saw a grandparent that was sick or, or having tough days, we're able to really say, okay, yes, this is a data point, but they're also a human being. We all have bad days, we have good days. Um, and we can't just kind of say one student is this, they're red and they're only red. They might be red, but they have things going on in their lives. So I think that's kind of the celebration for our staff everywhere is that we don't just see students as data. We use the opportunity, but we also really focus on who our kids are. And I think that's one of the most beneficial things about data meetings, in my opinion. And I talked really fast, and I'm really sorry.
Yeah, but Krista, you couldn't have, uh, closed, really couldn't have closed with, uh, a, a better statement around, um, you know, an, an RTI process and the data process and all the, the graphs we're showing and, and the fact that, um, you're, you're bringing it home to the, the, the human side of teaching and learning and, um, the students you care so much about and work with every day. So that was really perfect place to, to close out.
Thank you.
Questions, Melissa?
So I don't have a question, but I just want to say, my takeaways from this. I mean, I, I've accepted these kind of presentations before, so there was no surprises. I mean, to me, I'm walking away thinking we did a great job regardless of what's up on the screen. But it's, it was just really impressive to hear from the teacher that just spoke. I'm sorry, I, Krista, don't want to be naming out my glasses on me, but Krista. Um, what a great message that was to hear how teachers are excited to work. What a great message that was to hear how teachers are excited to work with the coaches. I remember a time when I called VC because it was before coaches, when you weren't here. And what an amazing accomplishment this district has since we've hired coaches. So I am just very impressed with the committees of the past that have invested in these types of services. And to see all this happening and this conversation tonight is exciting. After having a pandemic, it didn't seem we're really not in bad shape here. So I just commend everybody involved, the teachers and the coaches and.
Also have to shout out to the math leader team, which is works really tirelessly. And that's a whole group of teachers represented as well, working in parallel and in conjunction with the coaches. And also just also the teams of teachers who are piloting in the middle, piloting ELA and piloted math in the middle of really tough conditions. So you know, a lot of really dedicated teachers working hard in tough times to move us ahead for the next five, 10 years.
Yeah, this school deserves an A plus plus for all of us. Biggest takeaway. Best news of all.
Yeah, thank you. We're looking at cumulative data here. I'm wondering, is there like a dashboard for each kid? I mean, if a teacher or a coach wants to go on and look at an individual kid in the star three sixty program, they can pull up an individual kid.
Yeah, they can look at the history.
The other thing I'm wondering is, are we, I mean, right, right when I got onto the school committee, I had heard about star three sixty and I kind of did a little bit of rudimentary research on it. It seems to be really popular. It seems to be really popular with teachers, educators. And what I mean, is at a commitment level where we say, okay, we're committed to this star three sixty program for X amount of time, or is it just kind of, it just kind of, there's no end to it. You just, this is what we're using until the next better mousetrap is built.
We're investing a lot of time in training that we don't intend to to change unless there's a real strong reason. So I see this with us for a while. We don't have a contractual commitment, but we do have just an investment in in time and a and an understanding that it's a good product for us, so.
We've been using. I'll just jump in to say, three years ago, we did, the coaches committee did spend the year looking at similar products. And and we ultimately ended on star three sixty. So we did spend a significant amount of time shopping around, if you will, and this is where we landed. So we are committed.
And just to echo Melissa's statement, I couldn't be any more impressed with just the work that's being done by the coaches and the teachers to make this happen. I think the key to me, just and it happened at the end, when Krista was speaking, you know, if you do see a huge dip, it could tell you, it could indicate, well, you know, you've got a kid that's kind of just cruising along and all of a sudden there's a huge drop off. There could be something else going on with the kid besides a learning type issue that could be a red flag for us still or for the educator. Super impressed.
And multi-tiered systems of support, just to be clear too, does actually include the social. We do have our adjustment counselors and our school psychologists in the mix when we need to.
That's the tie. Great work. Couldn't be any more impressed.
I just want to echo what Sam? Go ahead, Sam.
Thank you. I also just want to say thank you. This is one of my favorite presentations every single year. I love, I love data and I love the progress that is very clearly demonstrated through this presentation. And just I brought up the parent perspective just because this is my first year as a parent in the district. And just from my perspective, how helpful it is, right? In our, in my very first parent teacher conference, to know how quickly my child's sort of lagging skills were identified and how quickly the intervention was administered. And that to me was just such, it gave me so much confidence and I felt like, okay, my kids' needs are like clearly being identified right away. And I just think from a parent's perspective, that is just hugely important for every every parent to sort of know. I know we, you know, we give, we hear a lot of bad that testing gets a lot of bad, a bad rap, right? But just from from my perspective, right, that testing is able to identify the things that are needed from the jump. And I just think that you guys deserve a lot of credit for that. So from both a school committee and a parent perspective, I say thank you because the work is very clear. And we appreciate it. Thank you.
And I just wanted to commend, I mean, the culture of the elementary staff is just for so long has been, I mean, I know it's been tons of hard work for a long time as we picked the new ELA and then the new math. And now you're even on the next iteration of the new ELA and math and the coaches. And, you know, Ben has talked a lot about, you know, these kids are all of our kids. And you definitely have communicated that to us with who is involved in your meetings. You know, every, everybody that can help a kid succeed is aware of what individual kids need, which which is great because, you know, we have so many kids with, you know, learning English. So that's, that's a, you know, a need and the person is there hearing it right away. And I just think we just continue to get, as you say, getting better, you know, every day. And the fact that you're saying, oh, what's going on in fourth grade, when you're you're really on top of, on top of things. And we love these.
Well, we're grateful to have Greg guiding us along too. He goes to our high point and he's our guide. So we do appreciate Greg.
Absolutely. These are, these are the reason we're here for these kinds of presentations.
I'd just like to say, thanks. Thanks for the presentation. It's great to see what's under the hood of the educational engine. You know, I got my little daughter just last night. She's in kindergarten, picked up a book on her own and told me, I want to read it to myself. And she, she, I'm like, okay, how about it? She's, she's really excited to learn how to read and she's like, the milestone is amazing. I'm like, like from one month to the next, I can't understand how she made this huge quantum leap like sounding out words. She's, she's in a language program because she has some impediments, but but yeah, thank you. That's all basically I want to say. I'm like personally, like really satisfied.
Can I just add up a couple of things? So I'm, Krista, I'm really glad that you called out Greg. He hates that, as we know. But I would say that a couple of things. One, this is a real, over the years passed, a real sea change from how elementary schools are operating, collaborating, instructing, just their sort of granular knowledge. It's taking a lot of leadership. Everybody on the screen is a leader in a variety of important ways. But as Kristen said, that Greg really has, in his, his, I think, incredible way, been a tremendous leader on this, and he does that by empowering other folks, the folks on the screen and many others to do fantastic work and supporting him to do that. So he doesn't like what I call it like this, but I do give him tremendous credit because the level of change in practice that has happened is something that's very difficult for schools to do. Schools aren't built for this sort of level of change that's happened over the last six or seven years. It takes real determination, real leadership, real, it's real art to help folks do this sort of change. It also takes a ton of collaboration. And I think you've heard tremendous examples of that tonight. That's collaboration, you know, coaches, but as folks, you know, Krista's speaking for many teachers, for teachers, for guides, counselors, for principals. The collaboration level at the at the elementary schools are, we see so many levels tonight. On, you know, selecting star three sixty, on the math and focus, on now looking at ELA, but then also looking closely at how our students are doing. The other piece here for me is, this is an example of how how we know our students very, very well. We know them by their learning and their progress and what they need. We also know them as individuals. So when they are having challenges, we understand why. And we support that because it might be learning need or because it might be a social, martial need. And that's what it comes down to, you know, these, the meetings, as we said, you might want to change any data meetings because it's about student progress, about student learning, if I know our students, it's much more than data. And then the last piece is, these are practices that can go to places. And we need to adapt these sorts of practices to middle school. We're starting to have progress. But in many ways, we'll adapt them, you know, sort of wholesale to the middle school. But there'll also be some unique ways that middle school has to do it because of their structure, because of how they're organized, their schedule, that sort of thing. But but there are definitely practices that can translate into middle grades and need to because we also need to understand how we can strengthen our practice and also results. So it's just very powerful main levels. And then that's sort of one of the highlights of things. So then also thank everybody for coming tonight and helping us to understand the great work that you do and all you teachers do. So really appreciate your time tonight, but also all the work you do.
And thank all of you for supporting the work.
Absolutely, yeah. We're glad we could add some coaches in the past couple of years. I mean, we're really kind of filled out all those.
Krista is really glad too.
Yes. A lot of things you've been asking for, for a long time. Thankfully, it could happen, so. All right. Well, thank you all for for your time on a, on an evening and on a Wednesday without any other sporting events competing.
I know. And Bill finally now knows that I'm more than just a mom of boys who play sports. That's all you ever say.
Thank you, folks. You're welcome to. So I'll go do other things.
Yep. And Melissa, even though you're here in person, you're welcome.
Oh, yeah.
Mail here. Thank you. We know you have many other exciting things to be doing. Okay. That was great. So we move on to subcommittee reports and we only have one report from the building finance subcommittee meeting of February 16th. And Melissa will provide that.
So I'll give a brief report. So we met, like Kathy just said, on February 16th, a few weeks ago. On the agenda, we talked about the fiscal 2022 budget and where we are. We mentioned the fiscal 23 budget and how we're going to be getting the big books at our next meeting, which is always an exciting time for B and S hope to make. We had a discussion of the seven D van program for the added district transportation. So that was a, an idea that we floated a few weeks ago before this meeting about looking into purchasing some vans. I think the administration has done a lot of legwork and some looking into how this program would work and doing some costs out of it. And so I think with the outcome of those observations of costs and pensions and hiring people to do this program, this program is kind of going on a slower mode right now. It's not off the table, but we're just trying to realize is there really a cost savings to invest in this type of program or not? So no decisions are being made on that yet, but at the same time, it's not off the table. Further conversations to be had about that topic. We had the almighty IT director, Grant Harris, who
Oh, goodness.
Put us, he's one of the best. Talked to us about technology and project costs. And we had a very detailed conversation about curriculum decisions from an IT perspective, a breakdown of the department's budget. We talked about curriculum software versus subscriptions and utilities, how building security falls onto that budget, operational services, telephones. In the classroom, we have instructional devices like laptops, printers, cameras, projectors, the smart boards. So needless to say, that department will for a long time ask us for a lot of money and we know why. And if there's anyone more enthusiastic than Grant presented to us to try to get, persuade us to spend money on IT, he's the person to do that. So we heard a lot from Grant. We, let me see, I'm just going through my notes. We talked about the, from the budget perspective, we had a little bit of a conversation about prepaying special education and the circuit breaker money and how that offsets the special ed budget. Again, we had more conversations about the Chromebooks and the cost of Chromebooks. We are able to put Chromebooks in the hands of grades three through 12, which comes with an expense. We pay for the devices, we pay for insurance costs for each unit, we pay for cap programs as well. There's an interest to invest in more projectors for all the classrooms. And I could just go on and on and on with all his ideas and what IT would like to spend money on and how those ideas are going to come forward. We did have one action item and I'm going to turn this over to Superintendent Lemus to describe the action item. It is an important one. He, he knows this topic very well. So I think the report coming from him, it would be much better than coming from me. So with that introduction, I turn the rest of the meeting over to Ben.
Thank you, Melissa. You covered a fair bit. But what I want to do, so what we, what we requested of the B and S subcommittee and they voted to support and recommend to the full committee was taking some of the dollars from this current year and spending it from the school committee contingency fund. Every year, the school we build in $200,000 in the budget for your discretion to spend on some things that may come up during the year. And then always during the year, not always, but typically often during the year, administration will come to school and say, this is where we can spend, we think it's a good use of these dollars, okay? So that's what we recommended B and F, which I want to go through quickly tonight. As, as Melissa said, Grant was just part of Gary, myself came forward with, I asked him to come forward and present B and F some details about how we're thinking about the IT budget going forward. And to help the committee understand, because we built a very significant infrastructure and technology over the last five plus years. And that, and I'll describe some of that here, what that means on an annual basis going forward, both to keep up things like Chromebooks, but also replace things like, for example, the, our computer labs. So what we explained or just, we talked about four different areas we have in IT and they're up on the board here. IT software and services, curriculum software and services, operational services, hardware, instructional devices and hardware. We're only going to talk today about instructional devices and hardware. We can bring this full presentation to the committee another time because that's the area that we're asking to spend some dollars from the school committee contingency, instructional devices and hardware. So we're zipped through these other areas to get to the instructional devices and hardware. And this, these are things like we use here, Chromebooks, desktops, laptops, document cameras, projectors, AD equipment, devices, you know, storage devices, printers, cables converters, these are things that you have in your home, but we have lots and lots of them. And it's really changed our life, like I said, five or 10 years. Obviously printers and desktops from a long time ago, but now laptops, tablets, projectors. We've moved a long way from the old projector that I was using when I was teaching to, you know, short door projectors that are in wireless devices. The place to talk about specifically tonight are our computer labs. These are things we expect to have as ongoing costs year over year in the coming years. So the first bullet here is the Chromebooks, okay? And that's Chromebooks that are one to one, but also Chromebooks to younger grades as well, where they're sharing them. Projectors become, you know, in terms of replacement of projectors on an ongoing basis becomes an annual cost. And then also the, the computer labs. So I want to dip into those here. Currently, there are two computer labs, the high school, sorry, at O'Malley, at O'Malley in the STEM lab. And those, to replace those when they are at end of life is upwards of $60,000 to replace any one of those. At the, at the high school, there's seven labs, computer aided design, cabin shop, robotics, machine shop. So some of these are the tech program and some of those are in our engineering and some of those are in art. For example, the photo lab was just, was purchased with grant funding from GF, I think, six or seven years ago. It, it sort of ran the course of its life in terms of that technology. It was that point outdated and, 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 and sorry, useful life. And then it was replaced this past summer with all new equipment, okay? And that's the sort of thing, because we have seven labs at the high school and two labs at the, at O'Malley, if you're replacing a lab a year and they have a 76, seven year lifespan, you're essentially replacing one lab every year, every single year, okay? And that's the sort of, we have to replace Chromebooks every year, okay? And that's a sort of understanding that we want to make, we develop in the school committee of just how do we plan for maintaining this infrastructure we built over a number of years? Because of the, the budget being in good shape right now for FY22, we're recommending that we use part of the school committee contingency to buy the equipment through. Uh, we use part of the uh school committee contingency to buy the equipment to to renew and replace. Um, two of the labs, one in GHS and one at O'Malley. Um, the STEM lab at O'Malley, that's where we do the CAD design. Um, in O'Malley, it's really actually a part of their science and math test program right now. And then uh the CAD lab, the CAD lab also at uh at the high school as well. We're going to have to replace these. We were actually initially replacing them next year, but because of the shape of the budget. And because of the use of S R funds, we believe we can, uh, we're, if we can move forward with this soon, shortly, perhaps tonight. Then we can get the orders in to get equipment for the end of this fiscal year. Since the B and F meeting two two weeks ago, uh, because they gave us this sort of initial, yes, this this might be a possibility. Grant and Brandon have looked into supply because one of the concerns was about supply chain and and it's, it's worse than we hoped, very honestly. Um, we are running into a timeframe here that if you order pretty soon, you may be out of luck. And it's still, it's still going to be tight, very honestly. So that's very quick, um, quick introduction to some significant. Uh, you know, thinking and work, um, but wanted to at least give you that summary to the members who are not B and F, so you have an understanding of what we're asking you tonight. And that'd be to transfer hundred nine thousand dollars from the school committee contingency. Um, the school committee contingency is two hundred, two hundred thousand dollars. We're taking about a little more than half of that. And applying it to uh replacing and renewing these two labs.
So O'Malley was at fifty-eight thousand and the high school was at fifty thousand?
Fifty-one, yeah, it's up, yeah, it's up there right now on the screen, yeah.
So there was a motion um out of the subcommittee, which was to recommend to the full committee to um. Pay the hundred nine thousand dollar cost out of the contingency fund, and I so moved second.
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 That was called from Christopher, heading back to the old days.
Wow.
This is a good.
Wow, really.
Wow. Good surprise. It's nice to get a long day, uh, Ben.
Yes.
Supply chain, when you say we could be out of luck, is this going to get it in, have it installed by the summer, so next school year in some place, or?
Yeah, so so the crucial piece is getting it purchased by the end of fiscal. We purchased it here, you know, purchased it here by the end of fiscal year. Then installing over the summer, you know, um, it would be the intention to have it up by the new school year. Um, it may be, you know, a couple of weeks into the school, new school year, but but the crucial piece is getting it here in in this fiscal year. Is that it's your question?
Yes, it does. It it's it's a smart use of the money, I think. I mean, it still leaves, what, almost ninety thousand, over more than ninety thousand. Over the years, how has that contingency been spent, if at all?
Uh, salary.
None of us can remember how it was spent last year. I wonder if it was spent last year or the year next year.
But I do, I remember um a couple of years, we had to dip into it for out of district um tuition, I believe, and. They were having some legal fees one year, maybe required some um.
Shopping equipment.
Yeah, there's, but yeah, right, like like cafeteria equipment.
Yeah.
Gary's on the call, if you want to ask him.
Oh, Gary.
Gary, do you remember any other specifics about how we've used, how the school community has used their contingency in the past years?
Um, it, like you said, it varies from year to year. Uh, sometimes we use it for salaries, sometimes we use it for out of district tuition. And other times for purchase of uh equipment. So it runs the gamut.
Unplanned expenses. Go ahead, King.
Right, so what happens to that money if it doesn't get spent? I'm just curious.
Gary, you want me to answer? Do you want to answer that? In terms of, in terms of, in terms of, that's a sort of a global question, in terms of that contingency or or the dollars now for any budget, fair?
Well, yeah, I guess so, yeah, yeah.
So Gary, you want to say that?
If uh, if we don't use it for, uh, if we don't transfer to purchase equipment or for out of district tuition. It, uh, we typically use it for prepaid tuition for the next school year. Or it it drops to the bottom line, which then any uh, any excess goes to the city for the free cash into the reserves of the city.
Um, another quick question, just um, I saw something that said the Chromebooks weren't compatible with the labs or something like that. Curious, is that part of the expenses, like getting a different computer system?
Oh, for, and and uh, let me just let me just quickly at the, at the presentation, um. So typical, um, for some of the specialized equipment, whether it could be the machine shop or the CAD, CAD lab. The Chromebooks themselves wouldn't, wouldn't have, wouldn't be able to be used for those purposes.
Yeah.
Because of the limitations, basically.
Yeah, okay, yeah, pretty limited devices.
Yeah, I think, I think that's most likely what um.
Yeah, okay.
If we were referencing.
There's not like a PC Mac.
No, it's not a PC Mac thing. It's it's more that that some of these are pretty specialized, like I know for the, for example, the uh, the the cat, the STEM lab. They were looking at to replace at O'Malley. There are some differences now in terms of, I mean, actually, the equipment there is quite old. I mean, you should hear some of the stories from from Dave Brown, Amy Donnelly. And um, and uh, I wasn't Alex, but I'm sure, I can't remember the the IT staff member's name, who was like. Who's the guy who's patching those things, those like towers together with like baling wire and duct tape, basically, okay, or the digital version of those things. Um, but but then, the to, because those are so old. The step up that we would go is so significant in terms of of just the technology.
And then you're going to update the software.
Right. One of the challenges there actually, that we're actually going to be wrestling with is. The monitors, monitors you would get today typically for this this purpose are are big enough that they would actually. Reduce the number of of workstations in the classroom, okay? But we can't do that because we have class sizes that are that the size that we need, that many stations that we have now. So it's just one of these things where as you upgrade, you often come into other complications that then you have to sort out. So anyway, we're going to keep the number of workstations, but it means it 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 impacts the, either size of the tower or the size of the monitor, certainly. But but Greg and others will will help work that through. But it's just, you know, as you get into e- end of life and then replace technology, just other challenges that you'll proceed, but. You want to be able to be playful about those sorts of things.
More discussion? Questions? Okay. Uh, we will go to vote, Maria.
Maya Verga?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Chairperson Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Melvin?
Yes.
Mr. Minio?
Yes.
And Ms. Prince?
Yes. So you should, Kerry's? You can send a random message.
I should do that.
It might be happening. Okay, uh, we have, um, under our action, we have two grants that we need to consider accepting. And the first one is the McKinney-Binto homeless education grant in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. So who to accept?
Second.
Everybody read what it's for? So it's set. Any discussion? All right, well, roll call vote, Maria, please.
Maya Verga?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Chairperson Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Minio?
Yes.
Mr. Melman?
Yes.
And Ms. Prince?
Yes. Um, grant is accepted. Um, the second um grant is from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Accelerating Literacy Learning Grant in the amount of a hundred and eight thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. So.
So, second.
Okay, um, is that a discussion? You want to give us a just.
Yeah.
For the description, because it's a nice amount of money.
Yeah, it's a nice amount of money and and we, this one came up. I think in January, with quick turnaround, um, so I put it together with the help of a, a couple of the coaches. And um. What we did was we identified some costs for the uh elementary ELA pilot program. Because we know we're making a decision in March for what we're going to adopt next year. And um, we're going to use about a hundred and eight thousand to purchase. Um, a portion of whichever one of those programs and also to fund uh training. Right after school gets out in June. So two, three days of training with those who are going to be adopting, so we can get them trained. So that money was allocated or planned for in S R three. So that a hundred and eight thousand dollars can now come out of it, S R three, and we can repurpose the money in S R three, which can go for a couple more years. And there are plenty of places to use that curriculum for the middle school would be a good place.
Okay. See, our questions are a discussion. Maria, can we have a roll call vote?
Maya Verga?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Chairperson Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Melman?
Yes.
Mr. Minio?
Yes.
And Ms. Prince?
Yes. Okay. Very close, Kerry's six to zero. Um. Other discussion and other communications? We have these cluster. There's nothing.
Not much new, except we still keep going up.
Going up.
We'll slow down that. We're we're working on some, having a um, a weekly report, a bi-weekly report. That'll be just a little more easy to understandable, and so it's a regular, more regular update. And we also can easily put it on the website as well, switching the project manager, you know, for that. But yeah, just it's just. Go.
Okay, um. Anybody have anything else? Yes.
Um, I would just like to refer our policy number K F, which is the community use of school facilities. And K F dash R, which is the procedures for that policy and the um. Listed fees that are associated with that policy to the B and S subcommittee for our discussion.
Okay. Without objection? Okay. All right. Okay, um, so I believe that concludes our business. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So we, so we, second.
Okay, Maria, please.
Maya Verga?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yeah.
Chairperson Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Melman?
Yes.
Mr. Minio?
Yes.
And Ms. Prince?
Yes. All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for attending. Um, good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, Sam.
See you, Sam.